County Commission Agenda. Okay. Fuck. Oh. Packets.
Right.
What? What? No. It's no different than, I'm sure that the, the letter that was probably sent to the Knox County Commission on the other side. They're gonna do whatever their, Raleigh Samp, Raleigh.
No, that's a.
For the preliminary engineering grant. It's just an extension for, uh, for the billing and all that, um, because they're still not a hundred percent complete with.
Say again?
They're still not a hundred percent complete on decision on TSNL type size locations, so.
And Mike, for the audience, uh, we're doing a preliminary engineering, uh, on that bridge so that we can apply for a bridge improvement grant down, down the road. Explain that to the public, why that's a good idea to do, do that if you would.
Yeah, we applied for, we got a word this back in 2020 and, yeah, uh, reason for that's for hydraulics, um, choosing the correct bridge to put in place, we're moving the bridge back, are we lengthening it?
Yep, and it's important and we'd been advised to have as many of these projects as close to shovel-ready as we can. So if money does become available, we can, uh, take advantage of it, so. So you just need a motion to, um, ex- extend the agreement or what do you?
Correct, yep, just a motion to approve agreement number seven one seven three nine six.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Don to approve the DOT amendment for seven one seven three nine six. Any further discussion needed? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
The next, next, uh, looking at purchase of a, a new wheel loader for the department, um, the one that I'd be replacing would be, we have a two thousand six nine twenty-eight, um, we'd be going up to a nine thirty-eight on this one. Our current one is about sixty-five hundred hours on it, um, the rear main is starting to leak on the engine. There's about twelve grand to have them pull it and plus whatever else they find while they're in there, so. We do have money in the equipment line item on the budget.
Are we, are we gonna trade this in or are we gonna auction this?
Right there, that is trade-in allowance right there.
Where, where was that at?
Right above the, the final price there, two line, two line items.
Thirty-eight, that, that seems a little low, doesn't it, for?
Well, I was looking online around the fifty to fifty-five range, well, it's like I said, if we got that, the leak.
Thirty-eight with a twelve thousand dollar repairs, about fifty.
Well, but we've had a, we've had a lot of success putting it on, you know, Purple Wave or something, I know those road graders. We got a lot more than we thought we would, I, I wonder if we wouldn't be better off doing that with this, this loader?
Um, it, it, because I was getting my numbers off of like Purple Wave, uh, Equipment Trader, so we're, we're real, real close, but.
Yeah. I don't know, I guess, I would, I would rather, um, I'm fine with getting the loader, but I think we could do better than that.
What, what if we could only get ten thousand dollars?
Well, I, I would buy it for that, because that, I, you know, wheel loaders are, from what I've been seeing, is a pretty hot commodity. Uh, thirty-eight thousand for that, I think is on the low end.
Either, either way, I'm good with it, all I gotta do is call Purple Wave and they'll come out, take photos.
I would move to approve the purchase of a new loader, whether it be the old one be sold through Purple Wave or traded in, whichever gets the county the most value.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve the purchase of a brand-new, uh, wheel loader. What was the number of that loader, Mike?
The new one, uh, nine thirty-eight.
Nine thirty-eight cat?
Yep.
And, and, uh, be sure that, uh, we're following the budget. It, it's not a budgeted item for this year, right? But you have carryover.
We have carryover from last year.
Because you paid for our truck, that you were gonna do this year, last year.
Yep.
Okay.
And this is actually less than. Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the purchase of the new wheel loader? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
I would approve the, move to approve the August twenty meeting minutes while we're waiting.
I have a motion by Wanda. Can I get a second on the, uh, August?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Dan, any further discussions on the August twentieth meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries to approve the August twenty minute, meeting minutes. Uh, we got about one more minute. About August payroll.
I would move to approve August payroll.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Don, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I'd move to approve claims.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by?
Second.
Dan, to approve the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, it is now six ten. Approve the provisional budget.
And you have a, um, the?
And we have a packet?
The budget report and that's your changes.
And this budget contains the removal of those, like the ambulance, the thirty thousand for the set aside and stuff like that, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dan.
Um, I know we, we had some disagreement on, on a couple items and I think we have an agreement on it. I, I initially wanted to, um, cut down on the pathways, uh, I went there and, um, educated myself and looked at it and I, I think that the new staff is, is doing a great job, uh, I, I wanted to cut that and I know a portion of the bud, uh, board wanted to double it to twenty thousand, but as a compromise, I would say we just keep it at ten. If that's okay with everybody else, because it has been ten in the past. The proposal was go to, go to twenty, I'd say we keep it at ten and I, instead of doubling it. Is everybody okay with that?
We had a agreement.
Anybody against it?
I am, I am.
Okay, um, and then also we had talked about, um, decreasing for the contact center, by five thousand, I, uh, they're making really good steps, they came in here at the last meeting. And I really admire the staff, they're actually going to more fruits and vegetables and potatoes and, and things like that and, uh, which I think is a good move and getting away from processed food, so. I would propose we go, keep it at what it has been at thirty instead of twenty-five, unless there's any disagreement from the board.
Any other changes?
No.
And are, are we in agreement with those changes?
I can live with those changes.
Yep.
Don, you said you could? Ryan?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with them also.
With that, Patty, you need a motion to approve the provisional budget, correct?
Yes.
With those changes.
Yes.
Yes, it has public comment.
Yep, yep. Okay, so public comment is now open on the budget.
Since I whined from the audience, I must want to speak. Uh, Sherri Lowe's, county resident, um, I looked through the budget that was, that was presented in the newspaper and I have quite a history of where our cash balance has been. And back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, on December thirty-first, your year-ending cash balance of funds that I consider county funds, which would be your general fund, your road and bridge fund, your jail, your emergency management and your building fund. Because when you have a listing at the end of, of the month, many of those funds are not county funds, they're other people's money, if you will. So those average about six point five million. And then we went through a string of years where cash was thrown at us. And for example, the highest ending cash balance was twenty twenty-two and almost twelve million. So if you looked at the end of July, your cash balance in those five funds is about nine point six million. So you've got five months remaining for the end of the year. You've got five months of payrolls and you've got almost three million in highway funds to spend yet, because I asked Mike for his end-of-July report. So if you look at just payroll and if Mike is allowed to spend his highway budget, your ending cash balance will be four million. Now, in October, you get your second half of property taxes. I did ask Patty Bavra if she had an estimate for what that would be and she has not been able to find that report to run for me. Um, if you look at your cash balance applied for twenty twenty-five, it's six million. So I would really suggest November, December, you relook at where your cash funds are, because that, that'll be after the October, uh, property tax payments, because, I mean, if you didn't get any, nobody decided to pay, um, you'd be kinda negative. And I, my opinion, I guess when I sat in that seat there is I never wanted to go below six million in your, in your operating funds. Um, I know there's a lot of people who think you should spend all of that money now, but it's like you and I have our personal checkbook, you've got that cushion. Um, so just to highly encourage you to look at that, um, because the seven million you have for next year's highway, uh, budget, I think is pretty stout. We've been spending a couple extra million over the last few years to make sure we spent the COVID money where we should. So, just a suggestion, thank you.
One, one question. On your annual analysis at the year-end, did you take into account accounts receivable, accounts payable?
I, no. No, I never do it, it was just at the year-end.
That could make a, a huge difference.
But I don't know if the county.
Not that big of a huge.
The county really doesn't have accounts receivable and payable, it's, it's not a normal business per se, because we don't, we don't process depreciation and all of that, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty cut and dry for what's.
Revenue and expenditures.
Yeah, it's pretty cut and dry and if you always pick the same December thirty-first of every year, I mean, you're, you're pretty consistent, so. Thank you.
Probably not the way most big businesses account.
I'm sorry? Say that one more time, Don.
Probably not the way most large businesses account.
No, no, counties are a whole different ballgame, which we all had to get used to, so.
Any other public comment? Seeing and hearing none, public comment is closed. Any further discussion by the commission on our provisional budget?
Do you need a roll call?
Who made the motion?
Uh, um, I made the motion to approve.
Dan made the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Wanda seconded.
Yep.
With those changes.
With those changes, correct. Any further discussion on the commission?
I think based on, on the discussion, it would be okay for us to review this on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
Have a, uh, a financial item that we can look at and say, okay, we're above or below. Where are we going? Because if we get, if we get to four million, we got some challenges.
We, we do have some challenges coming forward with the Johnson Bridge, once, once the, once that gets approval, the environmental study gets done. That's gonna be a challenge at that point in time. Um, as Mike mentioned earlier, we're hopefully gonna get the, the grant from the state, also the big grant, for that project, but there's, you know, there's always projects that pop up, so. So I agree with, with, with Don, if there's some way that we can get, uh, kind of a, a monthly, uh, projection or something like that, so. And we can discuss that also. At this time, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries to approve the twenty twenty-five provisional budget as amended.
When's the final approval?
October first.
October first, yeah.
Uh, Jeremy Heiney vacates section line. Is Jeremy here?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Just, I guess I'm coming back to see how we turned out with the, whatever was in the paper.
Is Rob gonna be here or?
Rob was gonna be here at six thirty.
From what I understand, uh, you know, this is all filled out like it's supposed to be, he's the owner of record and you don't see any issue with it?
And didn't you mail copies of this to different people or no?
I talked to the neighbors.
Okay.
Um, there's, is it any?
Are there any of them here complaining?
You're the landowner on both, both sides.
Landowner on both sides, talked to the state, state, so.
Patty, do we need a voice vote or?
Uh, just, uh, most of you.
Do we have to open it up for public?
Public comment? So are there any, is there any further public comment on this issue?
Yeah, ba- basically, Highway fifty-two runs north of his property, the actual section line runs, he's the landowner on both sides. And to me, this just makes sense to vacate it to allow him to build on his property, so.
So is that a motion?
I'd, I'd make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
So I have a motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to approve the request to vacate the section line. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Good luck.
Can I get my building permit tomorrow then or?
Yeah, you should be.
Talk to Gary.
Not a problem.
That's a Gary thing.
Yep, all right.
Snow is gonna fly before we know it, right?
Yeah, right, thanks, Gary.
Yep, thank you.
I think you can apply for it online tonight.
Pathways, Will Kennedy, are you here?
He might not be here, it says six twenty-five.
Oh, so we got another five minutes?
Did he request to be on this agenda, Patty, or is this from the, the?
No, there's a, there's a request.
Okay.
It was, the request is from last time, but, um, he thought it was a different day than.
Okay.
And, uh,
So he may or may not be here.
Yeah. I sent him the time and his email, so.
Do we wanna talk about meeting videos?
Let's do the meeting videos.
Yeah, so, uh, we did, uh, get together, um, our, kind of our plan here is actually, you know, looking at the equipment, really, um, you're replacing the microphones isn't gonna change a whole lot. One of the big things out of the, out of, uh, our discussion there was that, uh, it really kinda falls on us as the commissioners a bit, um, in the meetings, most of the, some, some of the background mute, noise on these microphones are, is making it a little harder and so, um, a lot of other meetings when, especially when the room gets a little bit noisier, you have to flip your mics on and off if you're not speaking, um, shuffling the papers back here and stuff like that, that catches, picks up on the microphone, makes it harder to hear. We also looked at, we also want to, we're, we're prototyping out a little bit different system, we actually are working on it tonight, right now, kind of dry running it. Utilizing Microsoft Teams to run our meetings, that will also get rid of people having to call in on the phone and trying to put a speaker to the phone. Um, additionally, we also wanna be able to have, when we have our meetings live, anything that's being presented is also available to the public and they can watch that as well. So, um, those, the, that's what we have in work, but it's, uh, like I said, we're dry running it tonight. We already have a few things that we have to, can get, work out and, uh, but we hope to have these changes ruled out within, probably within a month or so, so. And you might notice also, we, we may, we did some adjustments, we did get the speakers in the, in the back room there, uh, working as well. Some of it was a lot of, uh, we lost some people that knew how to do these things and none of that knowledge was carried forward, so we're making sure that it's well documented and that doesn't get lost, seeing the unfortunate event, I'm not here anymore, so.
Is there a estimate on cost?
This is no cost to the county, no cost of the county in this case. The only thing that we thought of, maybe if we don't get the, uh, portable microphone working, because we see, we do have people who come up and they wanna talk out here. If we don't get that working, we might buy a new one there, but that should be minimal cost. But we wanna try to get the one that we have working, uh, well first. But, so, so no cost, uh, it is, we, I think it'd be a good idea to try to implement this. Kinda falls on you, John, a little bit, we have to be very organized in our meetings and make sure that we don't just speak up up here. We try to get recognized by the chair and say our piece and then, you know, so that we can try to keep the microphones on one at a time, that way, uh, everyone's voice comes out clear.
Okay.
So.
Do you want to do number eleven?
So number eleven? Yeah, we could do that. Could get that out of the Yankton County Volunteer Liability Insurance. And this is basically for, to cover for liability, for cover Yankton County for liability, for anyone that does any volunteer work for, for the county, so. We have that from MT and RC Smith is correct and, and, uh, Paul Scherslick, our emergency manager, updates and makes sure that that list is, is in order. So, uh, I guess I would.
Did, did the, did the Public Assurance Alliance, they don't have anything similar to this?
Uh, I, that I don't know, Dan.
Okay, because I know this is really good insurance, if an employee say they dropped their phone, it would cover it, but, you know, I'm, I'm, it's pretty expensive too, so. Yeah, I'm fine with, I'm fine with going with it for this year, but for next year, it's something we should just keep, you know, you're, you're usually better adding on to an existing policy than having two policies, so. But I guess I'd, I'd move approval of the workman's comp coverage for volunteers.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, any further discussion by the board members? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, just like to, you know, I'd say we appreciate those who do volunteer for our emergency management department. When we need them, they're an invaluable resource and, uh, we've had enough emergencies to know that we, we couldn't do this job without them helping out, so thank you to all our volunteers.
Certainly.
I think we're, we're waiting for number nine now, right?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, four more minutes? That's all we got left.
Commissioner updates.
Commission updates. Wanda, you have anything to fill us in on?
No. Well, actually I do. The title insurance policy has come back for the property that's being purchased in Irene, so upon the presentation of the, closing statement to the auditor, that can close. We can get that done.
Did you get that, yeah? Okay. Ryan, any other updates on the?
I don't have any further updates.
Don? Dan?
We got, uh, the Missouri Sedimentation Action Coalition on the week of September ninth through thirteen is doing some demonstrations on Wednesday, Thursday, uh, Wednesday, September eleventh, Thursday, September twelfth, and Friday, September thirteenth, and that's gonna be in Naya Brera. And they, um, asked if any of the county staff or anybody wants to go, you know, check out what they're, what they're gonna be doing. I guess it's a, a Corps of Engineered Bed Load Collector Project, just to measure the amount of sedimentation that's getting in that area, so if you're interested, we can, I guess, get out the times, but it is on September eleventh in Naya Brera at five thirty and Thursday, September twelfth at the Naya Brera State Park Campground, number twenty-five, from ten to five o'clock. That's all I have.
And that's open to the public?
Believe so, yes.
Well, more, if more than two of you go.
Yep, yep. Is anybody planning on going to that or not? Anybody planning on going that, to that session? I might go to one of those, but I don't know.
I might go to one of those, um, but I'll have to check my other schedules first.
Could you, if you're going to one, just email Gary or Patty and then I'll make sure I go to a different one.
Yeah.
We don't have a quorum, so.
Got about one more minute. Six thirty. I'm sure this is the time that everyone has been awaiting.
Good evening, uh, it's, it's time for second reading to consider the recommendation to adopt Yankton County Ordinance twenty twenty amendment to Yankton County Ordinance twenty twenty definitions, Article twenty-six, Wind Energy Conversion Systems per Ordinance twenty-four Z N O six.
I'm sure that all of us has had an opportunity to read this thing through more than once. Any questions? At this time, I would open up public comments.
Evening, my name is Matthew Conway. I wanna thank the planning and zoning for all the work they've done on the Article twenty-six. And I think what you came up with last time is kind of a good all-around deal for everybody and I would ask you to prove it the way it was, one mile, step back and the other things in there. So, and make sure they clean up when they're done, because they really make a big mess out of these things. And I would keep an eye on the roads, because it's what I heavy, I didn't heavy haul, but they're big and they tear up a lot of stuff. Thank you.
I am Barbara Steskal. And first of all, I want to thank everyone that's been involved in this process for all their time and energy, there's been tons of it and you are all appreciated and, as well as the task force and the planning and zoning. Tonight, I'd like to compare the legacy of two men. George Washington's legacy is that of heroism, endlessly fighting for liberty for his friends, a patriot, a man loyal to the residents in the fledgling USA. His legacy is one that we still honor and celebrate. The other man also fought bravely in the Revolutionary War and was even promoted to the rank of Major General. You would think then that we would celebrate his legacy too, right? But sadly, no, we do not. Even though he had done many good works, because of a singular act, Benedict Arnold leaves a legacy of that of a traitor, someone who let his friends down. Legacy is defined as the long-lasting impact of a particular event, action, et cetera, that took place in a person's life. Legacies don't disappear. Both these men's legacies have endured for two hundred forty-four years, impacting the nation and their families. You have seen and heard so many residents who would be directly affected by the installation of a C-Wex project. They have asked over and over that you protect their way of life, their livelihood, their land, their health, their view in this beautiful county. They are looking to you to do right by them. They have asked for a ban on C-Wex project, projects, but have shown their ability to compromise with the task force and then the Planning and Zoning Commission. Asking them to give up much more than that is really a betrayal to them. Aside from protecting your county's rural residents from financial and physical harm, you may also want to consider the entire county's well-being. Passing zoning regulation that does not adequately. Passing zoning regulation that does not adequately provide protection could very well result in litigation between harmed residents and the county. It is doubtful that those harms will attempt to gain redress from a large impersonal group of international corporations, but will instead look for reparation from the county that failed to protect them, especially when that county was fully informed of the risks. As an official of the county elected to protect and fight for your residents, the choice of what your legacy is totally up to you. Will you choose your legacy to be that of betraying the trust and faith in your ability to defend the residents? Or will your legacy be noble, one of courage, morality, and leadership? That choice is yours and yours alone to make. Thank you.
My name is Randy Wagner. I moved up here to the Yankton area about three years ago. I moved out of Wayne County, Nebraska. There was a wind turbine development that I lived in the middle of. There were about twenty-one turbines within a two-mile radius of our home. And I moved up here to Yankton to get away from them. And so now the wind turbines are falling into here, maybe. But I just want to tell you about my home. There were four turbines straight south of me a mile. And they were in a straight line, and I went out and measured them. They're thirty-seven hundred feet apart, four of them, in thirty-seven hundred feet. And putting that many of that close together would kind of multiply the noise, or it was a bit of a pain if it was like ten, fifteen mile-hour wind. But I was a mile away between where I lived and the turbines. There were two acreages. And those acreages were rentals, the homes were. The one, one home, the residence there, the family, was a trucker. He was my neighbor for twenty-five years. And in the other home, that guy was a mechanic for trucks in Norfolk for Peterbilt. He lived there eight years. And six months after the turbines were up and operational, they had the freedom, they moved out, they were gone. Where if you have a turbine and they build by you and you don't have anything involved with it financially, you don't have that option of moving away like they did. And then he had a hard time renting those two acreage homes out. It was probably a year before he rented the first one. And he was a, a local guy, but he had a business in Norfolk. And one of his employees, a young gentleman, moved out there, a guy that worked for him about ten years. And the other acreage, he couldn't get rented out. So he completely remodeled the house. And then there was a young, single woman that rented it. Now, that was three years ago. I don't know if they're still in it, but I just wanted to give you a little story about what happened, you know, in a wind turbine development. Thank you.
Thank you for an opportunity to make a few comments. I am Mike Keely, Yankton County resident, and I want to thank each of you, and also collectively as Yankton County Commissioner in support of Article 26 ordinance that was passed unanimous at the last meeting. And so I just want to go on record that I appreciate this and, again, support your actions in the past and hope that we can achieve moving ahead what was done at the last meeting. So, thank you for the opportunity to make a few comments.
I live in northern Yankton County. I ask that you guys pass Article 26. Think about the future generations as someone that wants to buy land in Yankton County. You know, you need to think about all the future generations. If you don't pass this and we get all these wind turbines that come in in the future, you're going to push out all kinds of people like me that want to buy land in the county. So I just ask that you think about the future generations. Thank you.
I live in Clay County in Wakanda. I'm not a Yankton County resident, but I do have family that lives in Yankton County, and I'm primary, my primary interest is in their well-being. I just wanted to reiterate what one other commenter had said about many of the people that attended the planning and zoning and also the task force meetings were opposed to the wind towers altogether and would not like to see them here. And, but are recognizing that that's an unlikely move by this commission and willing to compromise and happy to accept the suggestions of the planning zoning at two miles, thinking that's reasonable. This commission talked about one mile at the last meeting. And I just want to reiterate that as the starting point for those opposed to these, not wanting them at all, I would really encourage you to keep that at the two miles or the one mile. And any further compromise really is not supporting the people that don't want them here in any way. So if you can keep that at the, the one or the two miles, that would show some support for both sides of the issue. Thank you.
My name is Tina Lee, and I want to talk a little bit about history and building. They say that a picture is worth a thousand words. During the summer, Yankton County celebrated the building of the Meridian Bridge, and history was told in pictures. Across our state, we have built towns and communities. We have supported the renovation, renovation of the Mead Building. The people of South Dakota built the structures. When I look at the pictures in this room, not a one of them has a windmill in it. We don't build windmills. In twenty years, the windmills will need to come down, and then they still leave their imprint underground. To me, windmills are a business, not our history going forward. We all know Snoopy, the cartoon character. A lot of times, you have to read into a cartoon to get the meaning of it. While there was a very important Snoopy in my history of our family, he was a mongoose that occupied with my dad in Vietnam, the Vietnam War. And my dad was a Marine, and he got a Purple Heart. Now, how does this pertain to the windmills? Well, Snoopy slept in his helmet above his cot, and that he would feel, Snoopy would feel the vibrations or hear what a human could not hear for the incoming artillery. And it saved my dad's life many times. So we need to look not only as people, but we need to look at unseen things that we don't know about going forward. We should look to nature to help us make decisions. If it is an intruder to nature, it should be an intruder to us. Windmills have a lot of unforeseen, uncertain things out there. We may, we are going to feel all the repercussions, but not until they come. As our representatives, please make our military and not leave anyone behind to deal with the unseen complications. The setbacks are supposed to protect all, not some. Thank you for your service.
My name is Lori Sletton, and you all know I live up north in Yankton County. And I brought in thirty more petitions signed to Gary today. And I just wanted to quantify, that makes two hundred and seventy-six people from this county, specifically from the northern part, that are going to be affected by the current proposals for wind farms, so. And you've seen hundreds of people come in here and let you know. And this is our forty-first wedding anniversary. And this matters so much to us that we're here instead of in the Caribbean or something. But I think we'd probably have to settle for Lewis and Clark, which wouldn't be so bad. Two hundred and seventy-six petitions. Thanks.
Petitions or signatures?
Signatures.
Okay.
Gary, can you get us a copy of that? Thank you.
And first, I just want to thank everyone, not only in this room, but everyone who's put time and effort and energy into this. I know it's been a long haul for many people. I know this is not the first time that people have been presented with industrial wind around here, and it probably won't be the last. The one thing that we do know is that wind turbines grow. They may start with one or two, a small project, phase one, they continue to add. And so one of the things that happens is when we open our doors to this, when we say, "Sure, come on in," it does not end there. How do we know that? Look across the nation. One of the things that I think we really have to think about here, and it's been said, the impacts that we have on the decisions that are made today do not just impact us sitting here at this time. We have to consider the next generation, the generation after that, and possibly even the generation after that. How many times, as American people, have we been told, "It's safe." Here's all the research to say, "It is safe," whether it be a medication, whether it be anything else, certain gasolines that were used, certain oils that were used, certain lotions, it doesn't matter. There's always research that will say, "It's safe." But here's the one thing we also know. Wait ten years, wait twenty years, and you will see the deafening impact of those decisions that were made. Now, I believe that people try to make those decisions with the best intention possible. But here's the thing, you have a county that you represent that have been in these doors, in your email boxes, on your phone. They have signed petitions, and they are saying, "Please protect us." From what we maybe do not know these impacts being, unfortunately and fortunately, you're in the position to make that decision. And unfortunately, it does rest in your lap. Thank you for that. I think it's an incredibly challenging job. It's not one that I would be good at, so I'm glad somebody is. But at the same time, you have to think beyond the tip of our nose right here and what's in front of us. And I promise you, you are going to find articles to support both sides. You just are. But what we know is that we have to see bigger than this year, bigger than the next ten years. You have to go and sit, if you haven't, beside those wind turbines. Go and sit and see what happens to you physically and emotionally. Sit there for three hours, come back and tell us what happens. I know what happens to me. I also know what it does to land property, because I have friends who've been affected by it in this state. Please do not let that happen to your residents. They're asking you to not just support the small handful of people that truly do want this, and I understand their point on that, but there's more that don't. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to ask if you want to speak, to be prepared and come up and sit. There's a couple empty chairs up here in front, so we don't have to wait two minutes for somebody to come up and speak. So if you want to speak, please come up and sit down in front.
Your microphone's not on.
Oh, man.
I, I took, I took Ryan's advice, and I shut it off.
Yeah. So much for that.
If you want to speak, please come up, sit down up in front, so, so you're ready and prepared. Thank you.
On deck, so to speak.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm Ellen Ward from Viborg, South Dakota. I'm a resident in Turner County rather than Yankton. But I thought I would bring something to light. We, the people, have been gathering here, and for one reason, and that's because of the situation that is before us regarding wind, wind turbines. Back when this state was formed, one of the things, or two of the things that I know of in history that was established almost right away and commissioned by someone, or by the state, or the people that were getting ready to have statehood, was what you see on the wall right over there, the state seal. The other thing was the state motto. The state motto, if you all remember, is "Under God, the people rule." When the fellow who was commissioned to write that motto, the first idea or thought that came to his mind was, why not say, "By God, the people rule?" And then he got to thinking about that phrase and realized the message that would come from that phrase would be based upon how it's pronounced. "By God, the people rule," or "By God, the people rule." So he changed it. He changed it to "Under God, the people rule." And to me, that makes all the difference. I believe in Jesus Christ, God Almighty, and most everybody in here has the same situation. And so I look at as a fact that the people here in this county have brought their thoughts to you, and we all agree, at least to a large percentage, that we are telling you what you need to do, and we hope that as a result of that, you'll pay attention to what we have to say. Good day.
My name's Joshua Stuckey. I live in Yankton County on the northern end, in the footprint. And I'm sure everybody's pretty aware that I've been against this from the very beginning. Everyone has got my emails. But I thought about something today that kind of struck me as interesting as anybody else who's a manufacturer or a developer of any sort. When they want to do a project, they have to come in and buy their land themselves, fund everything to do it. Because why? Because they're going to make a profit on it, right? So why do you think the wind tower companies have to convince you to use your land and give you free money? Do you think that they just want to give you money out of the kindness of their heart because they want you to do better? Do you think that professors and lawyers from out of state are coming up here for free because they love wind energy so much and they believe in it so much that I'm going to travel across two states for free on my own dime to convince you to do it? If these things are so great and they're so profitable, why are they trying to convince us that they are? Why aren't they just saying, "Okay, whatever, don't do it. We'll go find our own land, and we'll build them, and we're going to make all this money that we were going to give you for free, and we're just going to keep it for ourselves." I will tell you right now, the only green energy these people are worried about is in your pocketbooks. Thank you.
Since I don't see anybody in the front row, I would ask one time, anyone else wants to speak? If not, public comment is closed. Do we need any further discussion amongst the commission on the proposed changes to Article 26 that we have in front of us? Hearing no discussion, I would...
Does this have the setbacks in it? Okay. Okay, that's what I thought.
I still think we should be using a C weighting for our noise measurements.
I think we pretty much took care of that issue at the last meeting. But do we want to discuss it further?
No, it's obviously, you know, nope, it's not perfect, but it's a lot better than what we had prior. Quarter-mile setback. We have some things in here to protect county infrastructure, roads and bridges with road hauls. Again, it's not perfect, but it's better than what we started with.
And we need to keep in mind that this is going forward. The application that was made is under the old rules. Anything going forward with new windmills is under the new rules. So I'm not sure that, under the new setbacks, that there will be the multiplication of windmills that everybody is worried about.
I think Gary has mentioned in the past that if we do the one-mile setback, I don't think we have to worry about anybody, any company coming into Yankton County other than in the future to look at building any wind towers. So at a one-mile setback, I think even if we were to reduce it to a half-mile, I don't think that there'd be a capability of any wind tower farms or wind energy farms moving into Yankton because of the... because of the...
Setbacks.
Terrain and the... Number of residences in Yankton County, so...
Your microphone isn't on either, Gary. Second one over. From the right, there you go.
You're correct. Basically, yeah, we did some maps when we were doing the task force that did half-mile and up. And even with the half-mile, there was very little area that you could do something unless they're all participating, basically.
And conceivably, somebody could decide, go from non-participating to participating, but that's their land and their decision.
So with further ado, can I get a motion to approve the proposed amendment to Article 26?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Dan, and I have a second by Wanda. Any further discussion?
I could see how you could get us confused.
I know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That was a good compliment for you, Wanda.
Maybe more so for Don.
I don't think you were very sincere there.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I guess if people are against it, there is a path. They can always refer it to a vote and get the signatures. But, you know, then we would end up with what we have on the books. So those are the options that are out there.
Okay. Roll call vote, please. Patty.
Dan?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Motion carries.
Now, Gary, we've got to advertise for, is it, two weeks?
Correct.
And then...
Twenty days after.
So the effective date that this will be will be approximately when?
Middle of October.
October 3rd.
It'll be effective, okay.
Two weeks and twenty days. Must be new math.
Okay. Looking at the agenda, I believe the only thing we have left at this time is public comment. Did Will Kennedy ever show up from Pathways? No, we're good there. Any final public comments? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed.
I'd move that we go into executive session for poor relief issues pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 and 28-13 and 28-13.1.3.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, a second by Ryan, to go into executive session. All in favor, aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.
I don't want to witness.
Thank you.
You been here for eight years, or?
Just started in August.
Okay, where you came from? Good, good.
We like it, sure.
Preston's a good guy.
...